Good morning, everyone. We have a fairly brief agenda this morning, but we do then have a task for the Family Engagement Task Force right behind. Ms. Dean is on her way. She'll be a few minutes late, but we will go ahead and get started. The, any, we really just do have reports and then new business and if there is public comment today. So unless there are changes to the agenda that hear from folks, it will move right into reports. And first up is Arkansas Teacher of the Year Randy House.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't think you'll be shocked to know that I'm gonna share about this really cool weekend I just got to have. So I just got back Tuesday from an extended weekend in San Jose, California. The Teachers of the Year, we were all invited to come and attend the National Championship Football Game along with a variety of other events. And I'm gonna share a little bit about that, tell a few stories and really share what was lasting impact about this. So first of all, I mean, the giant 2019, right? But everywhere you saw that gold football emblem for the National Championship, this symbol was right beside it. The Extra Yard for Teachers is a college football playoff foundation who supports teachers around the country throughout the year. They're the ones who brought us out and they did an impeccable job of raising teachers during this weekend. We were the VIPs. We were treated what you would expect athletes to be treated like. We were given these enormous swag bags when we entered. We each were given a football with our name on it and we were even given our own trading cards, which we were asked to autograph throughout the week. I have brought you all an autographed Randy House trading card. Now, I recommend holding on to these. I've heard they're gonna be worth millions someday. But they did such a good job branding this teacher foundation that it was literally everywhere and everyone knew about the teachers. So much so that moments after landing and walking over to the quad, we walked into the hotel lobby and I hear this man coming towards me and he says, "Wait, are you from Arkansas?" And at first I'd forgotten I was wearing the traveling t-shirt. And I said, "Well, yeah, are you?" And he said, "I've been looking for you." He knew I was gonna be there. He'd been looking for me. He said, "Me and my wife had been looking for you. We wanted to find you." I had no clue who this man was, by the way. And so he said, "Well, what's your name?" My response was, "Well, what's your name?" And so we kinda just had a little small talk and I noticed my husband off to the side with this utter look of disappointment that I was blowing this, right? So this is Ken Hatfield. He's a National Championship player for the Razorbacks coach and just an amazing man. And so I finally just had to stop and say, "I can tell my husband's got this look on his face that I should know who you are and I'm sorry, but I don't." And so he was even wearing the ring and my, there was a moment where my husband grabbed his hand like a godfather moment, like, "Look at the ring." Now you get it? And so we had this great chat and he shared about how much he loves teachers and that his job as a coach is just like teaching and how parents and teachers are the two most important people in students' lives. And it was just this really awesome moment to start my, my experience off. So I just love that. Like I said, we were made to feel very, very special, right? It's a football, but my goodness, every one of us took a picture with it and we tweeted it out and we tagged the foundation, right? So this was really cool. Again, the cards that we got. And what was really cool is they each gave us an entire set of our other people's friends. So we have this, I have a whole set now. It's really cool. We also raised money for teachers in the Butte County, in the school district there because of the wildfires. This was the county of schools that was affected most greatly. Several of their buildings were burned to the ground. And so this bus was actually an activation and if you threw footballs through this side of the window, it counted for Clemson or this side it counted for Alabama. And every ball that went through raised money. We were able to raise quite a bit of money for them. And they actually invited several of their teachers to come out and sit with us at the game. It was a 5K for teachers. This 5K alone raised $200,000 for the foundation. It was really cool. It was absolutely freezing in California the whole time we were there and rainy. But you can see the amount of signage that we have on us. The lime green was everywhere. And it was just a really cool thing. They even had live bands, like school bands playing for us. It was just a really neat thing. There was a very fancy, swanky taste of the championship we got to go to. Again, we were the VIPs. We were the teachers. And we're rubbing shoulders with all these well-known athletes and coaches that our husbands really enjoyed and we had no clue who they were. But the husbands really enjoyed this moment. Like I said, we were asked to sign autographs. And then we had the game and we were actually, we were there from 8:00 AM that morning, the game was at 5:00. So they had an entire full day of events for us. We had a challenge where we could throw a football for $1,000 for the foundation. Yeah, that was not great. Out of 55 of us, three made it. But then Kirk Herb Street actually made it for $500,000 and it was the most beautiful throw I've ever seen in my life. It was really incredible. And again, we had a tailgate where I met up with Ken Hatfield again and his wife. And she come running up to me and she had, he'd already told her everything I had said. And it's just this moment to where I felt like I was the most important person in the room and that doesn't happen a whole lot as a teacher. I also ran into some alma mater folks. As we were ready to leave, Kelly Dampis, who's the chancellor of Arkansas State University, I ran into him and actually at the moment, first I ran into Terry Mahaja, the athletic director, and we were talking to him and he's going, "Where's Kelly? Where's Kelly? Gotta get a picture." And Kelly had actually stepped out to Google me to figure out which one to look for on the field. And so this was this really neat moment again to where you just got a little piece of home. I got to meet this man, McDaniels is his last name. He's a former NFL Hall of Famer and he's now an elementary school teacher. And so getting to hear him talk about teaching and how that is his life's work when this man was dedicating his life to football before this, really cool moment. Really cool moment. There was a giant board where you got to thank teachers. There was enough room to write on that thing. It was amazing. And this is at the tailgate. So you get to put your little mark on it. And then the grand finale is they brought us out onto the field and that's us all in the black. We all had these great little uniforms to wear. And they put us out on the field and you get to wave and you get your, you know, your moment. But the coolest thing is as we're walking down this giant line, all decked out in our black, I hear this man lean over to his wife and say, "Who are they?" And her response was, "They're the teachers." And man, we stood, we stood tall. We stood tall. So that was really cool. All throughout this week, I felt like I was a big deal. I felt like teaching was the best thing you could do as a career. This young man, I had gone up to get a hot dog and I see that he has a Razorback shirt on, so of course, you know, I said, "Hey, Arkansas, hey, Arkansas." And ended up just talking to him. He's actually a teacher in San Jose and attended Arkansas State. Not sure why he's wearing a Razorback sweatshirt. I kinda gave him a little bit of orange on for that.
Dr. Hill may have planted some seeds.
But when we left, this was our last event all together, all 55 of us to be together. When we left that event this weekend, we were holding our heads pretty high and we were coming home with this feeling of just being appreciated and valued and it was just really a neat experience, so.
You wanna tell us about the money you won and how you won it?
Oh, Ms. Zook. Okay, I sure will, okay. So throughout the, there was a big educator summit where they had this entire room, you couldn't get in unless you were an educator, and they had prizes and games, massage chairs, I mean, just this great, all you can eat Chick-fil-A, all you can drink Dr. Pepper. I mean, just a really cool deal. And we were getting ready to go watch Mandy Manning, our National Teacher of the Year, speak and they had asked us to go ahead and go into the room. Well, there was a speaker who was wrapping up his session. And so we were walking in kinda quietly and going over to our section and he said, "I need, you know, I need someone who's willing to step out of their comfort zone. I need someone who's willing to come up here and dance and I don't know what happened with my arm, but something went like this. I'll do it." And so before I knew it, I'm on this stage and was asked to do a dance battle with a teacher from San Jose. I killed it and it was absolutely no, there was no, there was no chance. And I won a $500 Donors Choose gift card from that. So that was really cool. Also won registration for the ASCD National Conference in Chicago and a really swanky pair of earrings. So it was just kind of a neat little deal. So any questions?
Thank you so much for sharing. Any questions? That's great. Thank you. Give us our cards.
I'll give you.
All right, great. On the chair's, uh, chair's report. Thank you. Oh, signing and everything.
Yes. Good picture, too.
On the chair's report, just a few logistical things. The, we were originally planning to have a report today on PLCs, Professional Learning Communities. That had to be delayed and it's gonna be in April when Prescott Group can be here. So that's planned on that in the April. We, next month, may have a rapport, may have a work session on, on kinda how, a new way of thinking about standards. So that, if Ms. Smith, is that still making sense for, for February? Okay, so that'll kinda be on our, we'll figure out when during our February meeting, but we'll be rethinking how we have historically thought about standards. And so Ms. Smith is gonna work with us on that in February. In March, of course, we will be in Northwest Arkansas. And so again, you know, departing, well, this meeting's starting there, 10:00 AM on Thursday in Northwest Arkansas. Ms. McFetridge and Ms. Wendell are working on location for the Thursday meeting. We'll have a full traditional meeting that day, dinner that evening. And then on Friday, we will visit two schools, in P Ridge and Decatur. We will start fairly early in the morning on Friday and then finish mid to late afternoon on Friday. So that's kind of the, the game plan. What I'm ask, I ask of you is if you could come in February with your, your travel plans, personal travel plans, because Ms. Wendell's gonna need to figure out the number of cars leaving from here. So think about your arrival and departure time in Northwest Arkansas and then whether you need to take a personal vehicle or, or part of a, a group that can go from Little Rock. Okay, obviously it doesn't apply to Northwest Arkansas people, but, but the rest of us. Sound good? So that's the game plan for, for March. The other logistical thing I, I need to note, you remember that in our new operating procedures, we have moved up the election timeline for, for Chair and Vice Chair this year. And so just to remind y'all that, that process now, by March 1st, the Chair appoints a nominating committee, committee of three board members, all of whom have served at least 18 months on the board. And so that would mean that, that anyone except Dr. Moore or Ms. McFetridge would be eligible for the nominating committee under our, our changed rules. And then that group will, will nominate the slate at the April meeting. So we'll, or the report will come out in the April meeting and then the election will take place in, in, let's see. No, in April, we will actually, that, we will elect in May. So in April, we will have the slate. In May, we will actually do the election, okay? Rather than doing it in June as we have in the past. So everything's kinda moved up a month. So I'll be, next month, I'll name the members of the nominating committee. So I just wanted to kinda give everybody, get everybody's brains going because I think for the, at least most of y'all who, who are coming back, it's time to think about whether you're in a position to be an officer next year. Ms. Wendell or whoever will be probably reaching out to you to, to gauge your interest in being Chair, Vice Chair, and then the nominating committee will have that data to work with as they come back with the slate. Make sense? Okay. So just, just a heads up on all that. That is all I have. Does anybody else have anything? Well, we've got new business later, but anything that's a report-like that won't be covered in the committees and task forces and liaisons? Okay. Then I'll give it to the Commissioner.
Thank you, Dr. Barth. Just a date that I'd invite you to put on your calendar, February 8th, we will be having our Impacting Tomorrow Summit. Again, that is where we bring together the teacher cadets and prospective teachers from the high schools all over the state to UCA campus. It's gonna be, starts at nine o'clock. We certainly would invite you, if you could fit it into your schedule, to come and join us for any part of that day. I think it goes till early afternoon, but if, so our higher ed partners will be there giving information out about their, their prep programs.
What is it, what's?
It's February 8th.
I mean, on February.
UCA. It's grown the last, well, since we started, it's grown tremendously, right, ladies? We have, I think we had over 400 students.
500?
500? Okay. Prospective teachers that are in high schools around the state. And, and that's not even with all of our high schools participating. So each year, the number of high schools that are participating grow, grows each year, the number of students grows. So we are very excited about that. And it's a good day for the students. Not only do they get a lot of information from the colleges, but they get a lot of support and inspirational, you know, speakers that can really help them in their exploration of that, if that's something they want to do. So we're happy to have that. And in that vein, we have a new video, our Inspire and Impact videos. So Mr. Dan, if you can cue that up for us.
A literacy specialist at Camden Fairview High School, Joyce Flowers began her teaching career in the nearby small town of Chittister. After nearly 50 years in the profession, she remains dedicated to teaching and is equally dedicated to encouraging others to pursue their goals and become teachers.
I've always known that I wanted to be a teacher, even as a child. I had two younger brothers and I would sit them in a chair and I would teach them their ABCs, their one, two, threes. And when they'd become impatient with me, I'd gather my dolls and teach them their ABCs, one, two, threes. And I started working in 1971. This is my 48th year and I plan to do a few more. I enjoy it. My first teaching job, as a matter of fact, was at my hometown, which is Chittister. It's about 15 miles up Highway 24 and I did my practice teaching there and the teacher under whom I was doing my practice work retired. And the superintendent asked, "Do you want to teach in her place?" I said, "Definitely." And I've been with the Camden Fairview School District since then. A few years ago, the literacy specialist retired and I put in an application for that position and I received it and I have thoroughly enjoyed it. The major difference now is that I'm not in contact with the students the 100% of the time as I was when I was a classroom teacher. However, I frequently do classroom walkthroughs where I get an opportunity to observe the students and I thoroughly enjoy that. And of course, through the Washtau Valley Community Foundation, I have a grant where we have the literacy celebration and I'm highly involved with the students then because we have several different activities. And it's such, so inspiring when I see my former students who have become doctors, lawyers, teachers. As a matter of fact, in this building, my principal is one of my former students. My Dana students is one of our former students. And in every building on campus, I have a minimum of three or four of my former students. So it's just the impact and having that motivation and patience and desire to love and care for children. There are several parapros in our building and I've been encouraging them. Some of them have degrees and I've asked them to check with the co-op, to go online to the State Department and read about those various ways as to how they can become a teacher. And we have two or three who are in the process of doing that and I'm so proud of them. And they are former students, as a matter of fact, so. In reference to teaching, so many students here on campus, we have a teacher cadet program and several of them are planning to become teachers. And some are concerned about the salary and I always tell them, the salary actually is not that minimal. In many, many places, the salaries are great. And not to just consider salary, but the impact that's made.
So you probably already know, but in case you don't, Ms. Flowers is also the mom of our own Dr. Eric Flowers here at the department and she's also a member of our ESSA Steering Committee. And the literacy celebration that they have each year at Camden Fairview is not to be missed. If you ever get a chance to be there, they usually have it in the spring and it is a big deal, big deal. And they bring the whole, all K-12 and I think they even bring the pre-K in there to emphasize the importance of reading and they make it fun and it's a great event. So Ms. Chairman, with that, that is our report for this month.
All right. Any questions for the Commissioner? Okay. All right, we are now down to liaisons and committees. I'm gonna start at the bottom in the hopes that Ms. Dean is able to get here along the way. Ms. Zook, do you have anything on the special ed front?
I do and I'm looking, she sent me the report a few days ago, so let me find it in here. Here it is. A special ed unit partnered with ADE divisions to provide training for schools identified as needing additional targeted support based on their special education subgroup. And trainings were held at the education co-ops across the state and at locations in central Arkansas. The special ed unit submitted a waiver extension request to the US Department of Education pertaining to the ESSA Alternative Assessment requirement that each state has less, the requirement is that the target, they want you to have less than 1% that are tested differently. And what that basically means is that something other than or a modification of the ACT aspire. So that's the, the good work going on there. And we were able to meet the new head of the special ed division in our December 20th meeting.
Hello?
That's it for special ed.
Okay. Any questions on special education front? Thank you. Then moving up, NASB, anything, Ms. Newton?
GIC doesn't meet till next week.
Okay. So we will get a report in, in February?
Yes.
As the new Congress gets underway. The human resources, anything, Ms. Chambers, Ms. Smith?
No, I did just want to appreciate Stacy Smith had shared the Guide for Life Program that they, they can, they've given us an update on or continuing to develop. It's very exciting, the work that's going on there because I think it aligns around behaviors and principles from adults down through the, through the school, through pre-K. So I just wanted to thank you. Hopefully we'll hear more about that. Excellent.
Awesome. Back to Ms. Zook for public school accountability?
Uh-huh. The Arkansas ESSA Plan Amendment Request was submitted to Secretary DeVos on January 8th and the letter and red line plan are available at the ESSA webpage. It was primarily an amendment regarding rules, not amendment regarding anything else at this time. And the Standards and Systems Support is working with districts to resolve any accreditation exceptions, like, and you've heard several of those commented on yesterday, and then they will continue the monitoring during the second semester. Thank you, Ms. Kaufman.
All right. Anything else on S, on the ESSA front?
She had shared about the ESSA amendment and then our next meeting for the group will be on Wednesday, January 30th, from 9:30 to 11:30. If anybody wants to watch it, it will be live stream.
Could you say that date one more time?
January 30th, 9:30 to 11:30.
Okay. Oops. All right. Any, any other questions on accountability or ESSA? Next up, Forward, and so we are passing the baton and Ms. Zook and I met with the Forward Team on, I believe it was December the 18th, to kinda formally transition. Diane, do you wanna do the report or do you?
Well, I was just gonna tell them, you were sent an electronic copy of this, but if you want a hard copy, those are, can be made available if you want it. And it's sort of from their perspective, the year in review.
So their annual report. And I think the other thing on the Forward Report is my last comment before turning it fully over to Ms. Zook is the, obviously their, their game plan for the, for the legislative session, which is very much focused on, on broadening the teacher pipeline, enhancing quality pre-K and then focusing on the pathway from education to the workforce. And so those are kind of the three big pots of activities and they obviously have specific and they obviously have specific items that are in those, in those groups of, of, in those categories. And then finally, Task Force on Family Engagement. M. L.
On December fifth and sixth, the Core Family and Community Engagement Team attended the Council of Chief State School Officers Family and Community Engagement Convening in Washington, DC. Positive feedback was given to Arkansas from the CCSSO regarding the intentionality of the stakeholder input process and the overall outcome of the framework essentials and key elements, as well as the toolkit format. Arkansas was a leader among cohort participants and colleagues. It was evident from the positive feedback from the other CCSSO state educational agency staff that Arkansas is a leader in positive family and community engagement. Dr. Joyce Epstein, creator of Epstein's Six Types of Family Involvement from the National Network of Partnership Schools at Johns Hopkins University, was impressed with our work and would like for Arkansas to be one of five states to partner with them. On December fourteenth, a work session was held with the State Board of Education to review and provide feedback. And positive feedback was given along with suggestions. Commissioner's memo regarding stakeholder feedback on the framework draft and toolkit format draft went out on December nineteenth and feedback will be accepted through Friday, today. We're still looking for funds. And we reached out to National Association Family School Community Engagement, NAFSKI, again, to discuss potential grants and funding. We're waiting for a reply. Our next steps are to review, the ADE will review stakeholder feedback regarding the framework. The toolkit is under development. Multiple internal and external groups are providing strategies and resources within a centralized resource sheet to ensure consistency with published information. The notes from the State Board meeting, that's what that is, okay. So I think that's it.
All right.
I have a question about that. Are y'all working in concert with the local PTAs, PTOs? Or is that work in two different groups? Sorry, she's got a little issue.
She gets so emotional.
I'm sorry if my question made you sad. Did you hear?
I didn't hear.
I know, that's okay. You understand the hierarchy of what needs have to be taken care of first. The, do you work, have the PTAs or PTOs in the local areas shown an interest in working with you all? Are they even aware of what y'all are trying to do?
Yes, we've got some PTA members in part of the coalition, actually, if I'm not mistaken.
And external.
And external.
Okay, good.
Yeah, 'cause I would think they would be real helpful locally when y'all can't be there. Thank you.
And obviously, the meeting today will happen in this room?
Yes.
Okay, so if folks want to stay around this, this morning and for, for a portion of that meeting, I'm sure you would be welcome.
With love.
All right. Okay. We will get, I'll work with Ms. Wendell. We'll get the, get that Standing Committee document updated. We've had several changes. We'll get those changes made for the, for the future. Next up, new business? Anybody have new business?
A couple of things. I know that during our meeting on the twentieth, one, or several of the parents brought up the concerns about what may be going on over at Parkview, which is a magnet school you chose into. But apparently, a parent or some parents, I don't know which, Ms. Dean might speak to this better than I, had gotten letters that their child was going to be sent out of the school, back to, I guess, their other attendance zone as a result of not passing a class. And I think the point that was being made to us that day was, if, if they are behind in reading, then they may not make good grades when they get to there. So do you have any updates for us on that?
Yes, Ms. Zook, we've, of course, we had a lot of communication coming in to us about that, too. And the legal team did some inquiries with the LRSD folks. And after looking at it all, what we, what I asked Mr. Porter to do was to let those kids come back or give them the option of coming back. Not to make them if they didn't feel like that was a good fit, but because there was such seeming lack of clarity, lack of policy regarding that, that this, this was something that seemed to be new this year, that had not happened in the past. And, you know, we looked at, we wanted to make sure, from an equity standpoint, that all students were being treated fairly per the policy. So that was this week. I don't know how many of those students have opted to go back into their program, the magnet program, or who opted to stay at their zone school. But that, that was in process. And then to help, you know, one of the big things is when something like that happens, you wanna make sure that you fix it so it doesn't happen again in the future. There's full transparency. So I asked Courtney Salas Ford with, she's over the Equity Office here at the department to work with the LRSD team to kind of pull together the information, look at what policies should be in place and versus just practices, so that upfront, parents and students are fully aware of the expectations. And it, it may not just be a Parkview issue because there, as you know, there are magnet programs at all levels of the district. So it was to look a little bit just beyond Parkview to make sure that the magnet program in it, in its entirety had the right policies in place and communications in place.
So it was more a matter of people not knowing the, quote, the policy or the rule on the front end, as opposed to it may or may not be a good idea, but we need to know.
Well, I think, I think the issue is that there, there weren't necessarily policies. There were, through the application process and through communications, the, you know, the point had been made that there is an academic standard to uphold, but we couldn't tie that to a policy anywhere and we couldn't tie that to any historical, you know, practice within the magnet program itself. One thing that I know Ms. Salas Ford has already started looking at, you know, magnets, there's a national magnet organization that kind of helps with best practice and those types of things. So be looking at that to make sure, you know, the, for those newer members, the magnet issue is one that has been around for a number of years. It was a response to DSEG. And at one time, it involved districts outside of the Little Rock School District. It was within the county. So there were students from other districts in the county that could come. Well, with the end of the DSEG, you know, the settlement agreement that was signed a few years ago, over the last few years, the number of students from outside LRSD, I think, has pretty much dropped to zero now. I don't know if there are any outside the Plasky County kids or Jacksonville kids that are still coming. So it, it's, it's a good time to really look at it anyway, since now the magnet is pretty much isolated within, the magnet program's isolated within the district.
Thank you. And also, I don't know, I failed to get an opportunity to talk to Ms. Kaufman about this. Back before we had ESSA, when we had No Child Left Behind and districts were called Academic Distress, we had an Academic Distress Subcommittee where the people came and talked, no, Ms. Dean and Ms. Newton and Mr. Williams were all on that committee. And I don't know if it would be a benefit to the board or to ADE in general if we had that now, since it's more for support as opposed to monitoring. So that, we were sort of noodling around over dinner last night, wondering about that. And I'm, I'm just throwing it out there. I don't have a thing in my head saying, yes, we should, or no, we shouldn't, or here's the pros and cons. But something that we as a board might think about to see if that would be helpful, so we can drill down and, and get some responses and some concrete kind of information that we can then bring to the board during the presentation of those districts that come before us. It might help as far as being expedient with our time. But it might not be something that, that ADE, Ms. Kaufman's group, the Commissioner, or this board even thinks would be of value.
Initial response?
And I'm sorry to catch you off guard, I apologize.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, whatever we can do to help provide you all more complete information, we'd be willing to discuss that and see what that would look like.
I think the, my, again, totally for the first time to think about it, having, you know, lived through that era. I do think that there were cases, I think it was a mixed bag during that, that period. I think there were, there were situations where for, for certain districts, the, they were really on the right path and that the Academic Distress Group did a good job of kind of elevating what was going well. And I think many of those districts have continued to succeed. I think the, the problem was in the most, in the situations where things were on the wrong track. I think it maybe heightened the stress of the districts, became a distraction in some way. You know, they had to come for that meeting as well as ultimately for a board meeting. And I don't know that it, it added as much there. I think you are right. I mean, we're thinking about these things in a different way. I think it's just hard for districts that feel, feel, are frustrated with their lack of performance to not feel that it's being called to the principal's office, right? I mean, I think there's just, it's very difficult to, to, to reframe that, especially because that history is not that old.
Yeah, and I hope that, that's why I said, because now we're really trying to help them realize we want to support, not monitor. That does shed a bit of a different light. I know the districts at the time, that were not under state control, it was helpful for us to bring to the board, this is sort of a, a board issue, or this is a, you know, not working together. You know, sort of had to clarify, but I don't know that that's even necessary anymore. I just thought, you know, it was something that we ought to think about, decide, and then go for it.
Any other thoughts on that?
I just, I just worry that it becomes a got you time.
Okay.
And, and, you know, if we're going to support, they need to feel the freedom to ask for support, you know? If it's, you know, it's almost like a, a classroom type, you know, if, if a teacher doesn't have a good relationship, that student's not gonna come and ask for help. They're gonna hide problems, that sort of thing. And so I, I, you know, that, that's my worry, that it, it would, you know, we want to do things to help and we don't want to get to become that, you know? We come here and we're gonna look and we're gonna get you on, on this point or that point or whatever. So, you know, that, that's my worry. Because we, we are trying to move more towards support more.
Dr. Moore?
Commissioner. I think the only thing I'm thinking about are districts that aren't yet in Level Five, but might almost be there. And we might not see them or hear from them until they get to us, like Pine Bluff. And if, and if there's a space to not, to bring those districts in or bring the department in to discuss with us what's going on there, so that we have a better understanding to prevent them from coming to us to be in Level Five. I don't, I don't know if we could do that.
Well, that's exactly what I was gonna talk about. You know, when, when we now have these levels of support, you know, a lot of the focus, because you had districts that came in and transitioned from the old system into the new system that were under state, under state authority. And now they are Level Five. You know, we, we've not seen how the new accountability system moves folks into a Level Five. With Pine Bluff, I think even that was, they were being looked at and scrutinized heavily under the old Academic Distress Subcommittee's. And so I really can't count those, that district, as being one. So, but there are districts that we recognize that are Lee County. You know, that is a good example. You know, you had a good conversation with them yesterday of the struggles they're having and some of the things they're looking at. It won't be a district getting to that Level Five, in my opinion, before you all see it anymore. And the reason I say that is if you look at those, those, those levels of support that we have created, a Level Four is directed. What does that mean? They're still autonomous, they still have their superintendent, they still have their board. But it is a directed support. So that means the department will be there telling them, this, these are the things you need to do. These are how, this is the way you need to change your budget, your expenditures, your staffing. And whereas in the past, Academic Distress looked only at the test scores and those proficiency levels. Now we can bring you a broader range of data points, qualitative and qualitative. I'll give you an example. If we go in and, and we have identified a district that needs Level Four support and we say, these are the things you need to do. And for instance, if their board says, well, we just don't want to do it that way, we're not gonna change. That's something that we bring to you all. That is a new, that is a data point that we really have not had of, you know, pulling that type of thing in. Now, you know, we, we can look at interim data. And if through the course of their interim testing, we continue to see difficulties and there's not the proper response to the, in the, in the classroom. If they have, if they don't have a curriculum. You know, those are things we will be able to see now before it gets to that point of the old Academic Distress classification and, and potential state authority. So it's, it's a better system. It's just so new, we haven't worked through all of the types of scenarios that would, would give us clarity at this point for, you know, how, how will it look moving forward? But I think it's, and I'll stress again, it's those multiple measures that we will now be able to bring to you that we, frankly, under the old system, just did not have.
What's, Mr., what, on, on the new levels of support system, what, what's our timeline for identification of those other levels?
Did Deb, did Deb leave?
She had to step out.
Okay, all right. So there's not a hard and fast timeline, because, and I'll give you an example. Right now, the districts that are eligible for 1003 federal funds, those are the districts that have schools in, identified as in need of targeted support or in need of additional targeted support. They, it's not a classification, but it is Level Two support. They are in need of Level Two support because they're trying to plan for how they are going to spend these federal dollars over the next three years, with the first year being a planning grant and that sort of thing. So, so that's information that we'll get, see how that's going with them. And then identifying what other types of supports are needed. So it's really fluid. There's not a deadline that we've established that says each year by this time, we'll have levels identified. Now, there is in the rule, Lori, could you look that up really quickly? Okay, so we, we did establish a date. But as we have now, in practice, looked at that, we're realizing, hey, this may not be practical because it then becomes a label. So right now, everybody is receiving Level One support, every district, unless they have been otherwise classified. 1003, districts eligible for 1003 funds are receiving what we call Level Two support. And now we're looking to see, based on the data we're getting, is there, are there any schools, districts that require a higher level of support? And that's all information that we'll be able to share as we progress in the... information that we'll be able to share as we progress in the, operationalizing this new system, because that's what, that's what really we're working through now, is operationalizing.
Okay, the question that I have is, if you, if the state board, if, if ADE brings to us a recommendation and we decide to agree with them on the Level Five, is there not a, a need for then to establish a plan for exiting Level Five?
That's correct, yes. So, under, yeah, so, and that's a good point, you know, with the districts that we have brought in, that transitioned from the old system to the new system, there was that uncodified language that allowed y'all to, to bring those in. But now with new ones like Pine Bluff, in the early stage of after a classification and state authority has been, that authority has been exercised by you all, then the exit criteria will be established. And Dr. Hernandez is working with Dr. Oa now on understanding and developing what that exit criteria would be.
Okay, so that's how it'll work. It'll be the liaison, in this case Hernandez, that works with the superintendent to come up with, you know, we believe that if we do this, 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 and this, we will be able to exit Level Five. Will that then require a vote of the board, or will a presentation of criteria, or is that what Ms. Prino's looking at?
I, I don't think it requires approval by the board, but it is something we would certainly bring to you, and we'll get you that answer.
I'm sorry to catch you off guard, it's just, you know, you're here and we're, we're trying to-
No, they're good questions, and, and we hopefully can get an answer found for you shortly.
I do want to say on the, I think none of us were caught off, off guard on the Pine Bluff front, because we have been talking about that district for, for a number of years. But, and I understand the, the concern about Level Four being seen as the new, a new label, but I think we, I think we really are committed as a board and a state to, to, shifting our way of thinking about, about this issue from, from, from sanctioning to support. And, you know, probably, I'm not going to be here that much longer, but I do think it's, it's, I think the board should not get caught off guard when a, when a district suddenly is moving into danger zone. And I think that, you know, those, the way it was articulated, those levels of support really did send those signals that, okay, we've really got a, a near crisis here, that if, 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 if there's not strong intervention, may require state authority. And we know that as a state, we don't have the, the capacity to control that many districts, right? I mean, we, we are maxed out in terms of capacity. So, so I, I think it, you know, I, I do see the problem with labeling, but I think there's also tremendous value in that, in terms of information to the public and to the board about where we are with some of those most challenged districts in the state.
And that could be part of reports, or, you know, a number of things, I guess.
But I understand, we don't want it to be a new label, but I think we, we've got to, we've got to commit to not seeing it as a label, but instead seeing it as a commitment to, to aid that district to the greatest degree possible.
And, and we don't want it to appear that it's progressive either, you know, like, you have to hit, you know, Level One, and you have to go two, three, four before you get to Five. That, that's not what we're saying at all either, because you could have a district that seems to be rocking along fine, but circumstances change, personnel, I mean, a myriad of things that could happen that may warrant, you know, more, more scrutiny and, and a higher level of support. So, it's, it just, anytime you put numbers on it, it lends itself to thinking in terms of a progressive type approach. And that's not what we're saying here, but I, I will give you, I mean, I just want to give you assurance that it is not our plan to allow something to get to a point, and you, you aren't aware of it until it's boom, Level Five, we're asking you for, you know, some type of, of severe action or sanction. We will be communicating with you regularly, and that's part of what Mike and his team, we're, we're developing tools internally to even be able to better track what's happening on the ground. There, that, that's been one of our, one of our gaps in the past, and, and we think we have a tool now that better allows us to know a more complete picture of what's happening, and then at the appropriate time, bringing that to you all, so you can, just so you're aware, can help us with, you know, the thought process, the ideas, and maybe the supports that you all could bring to that process.
And to end on a happy note, I don't know if, if any of you, I didn't tag everyone, but I put on social media, Little Rock School District let what schools within the district that wanted to change and not get away from Academic Achievement Awards Day, but they will also give Growth Awards Day. And I thought that was great, you know, the, the Assistant Superintendent Director, I'm not sure exactly what her title is, went on social media and so all the parents could hear about it, the kids could hear about it, you know, they had assemblies at the school and everybody was applauding, and anyway, but I thought, you know, here's someone thinking outside the box, adapting to things, additional things that are important. You know, we used to just have academic signing, I mean, Athletic Signing Day, now we have Academic Signing Day too, so, just a happy little piece of information.
Commissioner. Kind of building on the conversation we've been having, and tying back to conversations we've had in the past year, that may be intensified in the past couple of meetings we've had about Little Rock. I, I have a request, and, and I don't know, Dr. Barth, whether to make it of you and us collectively, or of the commissioner, but I, I do feel like it's, it's increasingly clear that we need a plan for Little Rock. And, and it's not to presume exit strategy or criteria to the terminology we were using before, that, that has to be worked through. But I do feel like bringing the community, the key stakeholders, the community, ADE, the board, but, but really starting to have intentional discussions about what happens next. I, I've lost track of time. Are we about to hit our four-year anniversary in state takeover at Little Rock?
Yeah, a couple of weeks from now.
Okay. And I, and I know there's a, there is a, there's a time horizon that goes with state takeover, but I, I would strongly recommend that we look at doing something very specific about Little Rock that, that brings the transparency and the understanding of what will need to happen next for them to eventually exit.
I think what, what we've been doing that is working really well is a task force. So, maybe we can do some sort of task force on a plan for Little Rock School District.
The stakeholder taskfor, is that what you're talking about?
A, a state board task force, but to also include stakeholders.
Okay, I, I just was trying for clarification. I wasn't questioning which way you were headed, I just wanted some clarification.
Yeah.
Is there a reason why we couldn't or wouldn't do that? Is there something in the, in the law, the policy, the practice?
Well, the law in, with regard to Level Five support talks about the, the department bringing recommendations of, you know, the, the actions that would take place, and it gives a list of certain actions that are within the authority at the end of that time. So, you know, how, the, how it's returned either by board, the election process, if it has not, if a district has not been able to exit Level Five support, what those steps would be, annexation, consolidation, reconstitution, all those things. So, there are, there are things in the statute that kind of guide us on what type of, you know, what a timeline, what a strategy, what all those things look like.
Well, I, I was particularly impressed by the intensity I felt on the phone. I feel from my, my peers that were in the called meeting in December. I couldn't watch it because I would have responded in delayed time to any requests that I had, but I, I thought it was reflective of good suggestions being made for consideration that we had not talked about as a board, we had not had a chance to work through. And, and trying to engage the community in those kind of discussions in that way doesn't seem the most healthy way to, to think about transition and, and real change that needs to occur. So, I do think something different than what we've been doing is required.
Dr. Moore?
Has, has the state board ever sat down with the Little Rock CAB board?
No.
Is that, would that be helpful? Would that be something that we would task them to do and to give reports to us about what they're doing? I don't know-
Community advisory board.
I watched them on live stream, but I don't know that others may or may not do that, the CAB meetings. But yeah, I think that, so, they know what we're willing to help them do, and they, we know what they're willing to help us do, is if that doesn't interfere with the Level Five and the Hernandez and poor and you working together.
No, community advisory board, the Little Rock Community Advisory Board, if you recall, we, we carried that over. In the current law, there's not a community advisory board under Act 930, because with what we created was for prospectively, was for a, the possibility of a board to be left, either with limited power or no power, but, you know, there, there are options now. Before, it was remove the board, remove the superintendent. That was, that's pretty much it. Under Level, or under Act 930, you can remove the superintendent, remove the board, limit the authority of the board, remove individual members of the, I mean, there are a lot, many more options now for any Level Five board that, you know, come, or any Level Five situation that comes about now. So, for instance, in Earl, although that was fiscal distress, we left that elected board in place as an advisory board. So, in essence, they are the community advisory board, it just happens to be the same people who were elected previously. So, there are more options now than we had under the old ACTAP.
So, right now, the community advisory board primarily deals, in Little Rock, primarily deals with personnel and student issues, is that correct?
They, they, they do as far as their hearings, but they still have the same charge that they did when they were appointed, which is working to improve the conditions that created the academic distress. Now, it would be the conditions that would have created a Level Five, in need of Level Five support. And so, you know, we tried to reiterate to them when we transitioned from ACTAP to the Arkansas Educational Support and Accountability Act, Act 930, their charge is the same. It's to be looking at data, to be looking at those things that they believe created the conditions where students weren't successful, and to be giving advice to the superintendent and to ADE and to LRSD for what, you know, what, what changes could come about that would help solve those conditions.
I do, could I ask Ms. Prino to come forward? I, I think we just all need to kind of get on the same page a little bit about what the responsibilities of the department are as, as, as we move towards the, the end of a five-year period when a, a district is under state control, state authority, and then what the duties of the, of the board are as we move there. Because I think, to go back to Ms. Chambers' question, I mean, I think what, what I'm hearing from her and Ms. Dean is the board trying to say, okay, what, how do we need to get ready for this? And what do we need to do in terms of planning towards that, that, that period, whether it's exit or one other, or some other kind of conclusion to this, 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 this control-
I guess, I guess the question itself, let me just say this, and then you can, you can follow up if you want. The five years ends in January of next year. In other school districts where we have had state control, decisions were made by January, you know, whether they were ready, you know, what steps would be taken. I mean, decisions have to be made by January, what steps will be taken. Under the new law, there are many more steps that could be taken. For example, even after the five years, there can be a limited authority board in place. There could be a new election. There can be a complete handover. There could, I mean, there are all kinds of different options for what happens at the end of that time. Now, the actual, if, if, for example, there would be a, a new election called, it wouldn't have to be called and conducted, and the new board wouldn't have to be in place by January first. That's never been the interpretation of the law. In the other districts that we have had state control over, you know, if something happens in January, I think it was Helena West Helena and also Plasky County Special School District, in those cases, the, there was an election, but the, you know, it was, there was a return in January, there was an election, and then the new board didn't come in until after the election was conducted and the, the board was trained. So, there's kind of, there are kind of various options, but, you know, once the five years rolls around, that's when decisions have to be made.
And that is different than what we were told a few months ago by, by the, I believe, Ms. House Ford, that, that we were told then, if I am correct, that, that the statute reads that the five-year clock ticks out January 28th, 2020, which would have required elections this year.
Oh, no, 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 no. That's never been the way-
That's exactly the way it was portrayed to the board a few months ago, and it's not been corrected.
Okay, well, I guess, I guess I would correct it right now if that's the way it was portrayed to the board before, because that's never been the way the law was interpreted, and that's not what the intention, that's, that's not what the intention is. And that's, it's just never been the way that it's been done.
It's, it is the, well, it, it is the way it was portrayed, stated a few months ago.
And I'm not arguing with you about that, I, I don't mind that.
And Lori, what, that is assuming that the district is out of Level Five, is that correct? Or if they still remain in Level Five?
That is assuming that the, the department recom, the department, I, I don't know if the word certified or recommends to the state board that, that they are, that there have been significant, the, the changes that are necessary to exit Level Five, yes.
And that's a determination made by the department?
By the department, yes.
Okay. And if, and if the department doesn't make that, the law states other options as well? Is that correct?
I'd have to look at the law more, but I mean, basically, you know, there's always been the consolidation and annexation, that's the one. But, you know, there might be an opportunity, rather than just let the board, let completely release Little Rock to local control, there are these other kind of inter, intermediate options, like appointment of a limited authority board, things such as that.
Okay.
Ms. Chambers.
So, Commissioner, that's the, the lack of clarity may be on our part, or maybe said differently, we, we need to be informed on a spectrum of options and know what our responsibility is to that. And as we start to entertain significant, maybe changes or opportunities to, to, to do things within, in the district right now, which is what in part some of the subject matter was that was brought forward in December, I, I want to do a better job of being informed of what our responsibility is to that. So, it's not just, there is a clock that's running in the background, and I want to know what our responsibility is relative to that, but also knowing the steps that can or would be taken leading up to either an exit strategy or some other outcome. I would appreciate, whether it's a work session, a task force, but my guess is if we are lacking clarity, the community probably is too. And so, how can we start to have some shared understanding of where we are and, and on, on what path?
And I think it's all about what's the best future for Little Rock, because, you know, we're, we're, we are four years in, and I think it is fair to say that the community, at least as we have seen it, does not feel better about where- does not feel better about where this, where the situation is than, than four years ago. And it feels, in fact, we, as we saw on, on December twentieth, stole a tremendous amount of frustration. And I think we need to do, as we have a responsibility, to, um, return the Little Rock District, assuming it ultimately is returned, because there are some constraints on, on consolidation and annexation in the Little Rock District because of the federal court orders related to the changing of the district lines, as Ms. Zook and I know, know well from our, uh, subcommittee a few years ago. So I think we've just got to get our brains around how we, how we have a future for the Little Rock School District on its own that it has the greatest possibility for success and the greatest possibility for, uh, the kind of leadership, lay leadership, that really keeps that district moving, uh, in a, in a good direction. Because we cannot maintain state authority forever, um, that's clear and under the law.
Yeah, I think, uh, to go back to your point, um, I think it's going to be important for us, not just us to be clear, but, uh, for all of the stakeholders involved, the community, so that in January of twenty twenty, there's not like, like you said, that's not what we were expecting. Um, so I think it's going to be important for everyone involved, all of the stakeholders, to get on the same page, understand all of the options, um, and make sure that we are on a path to complete autonomy. Because that's the best scenario for Little Rock School District and for the students as well. Um, so whatever, I, I just agree with that, whatever we need to do, what, whatever that is, I think we need to get on that path as soon as possible.
And Commissioner, I don't mean to imply, my lack of understanding, I know is not a lack of understanding on the department's part. Or you, and people are thinking about this and working very hard. I'm just asking that we now be more intentional and more, and more transparent about what we're doing and how we're going about it, and understand our, our role as the state board. I, I think that will, I, I, I'm not looking for relief from frustration. I'm not, we, we have a duty, we have responsibility to the, to the children of Little Rock. But I do think the best solution involves all of us coming together and solving this. And I think it's time to be more, um, external transparent on how we're going to do that.
Thanks. Any other, any comments on this?
I was going to say something on that. And I don't, you know, it's a very complex issue, and we're all trying to get it, work towards resolution for the betterment of our kids. And, uh, I, I just know how my mind is wired, and so just to not speak for anybody else in, in, in coming up with a, a recovery solution plan, which is tied along academic achievement, tied into the financials, uh, but looking as a, as a strategic recovery plan for transition and laying those out by months, years, dates, whatever, I don't know. And then if, if, if you don't reach those goals, and it has to be modified based on a lack of progress, then that's, that, to me, that's transparency, and we say, hmm, we didn't meet that, so we're going to have to back that out just a little bit. But I think if we're able to say, hey, here are goals, this is what we desire and aspire, we use that word a lot, you know, to do, uh, for, 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 for this school district. If these conditions are met, and if not, why are they not being met? Then there's some level of accountability being taken place, and then if that doesn't happen, everybody see why it's not. But if we don't communicate those things and we can't see why that's taking place, and we don't know, and then the community doesn't know, but we're not, they're not, uh, fully aware of why we're not moving to transition, then that's when the mud, the, the water is real muddy. And, and there's no clarity in the aquarium to see the fish. And, and, and I think if, and, and, and it may not be right, you know, you have, you have a goal, you have a plan, and sometimes it just doesn't work, it's just like in business, not hitting your business forecast, and so you have to lay folks off and do some things to, then when you turn around, stock's up, then you go do more things. And so if we had a plan and we came out and we said, this is what we hope to do, everybody go, yes, that's what we hope to do. If something happens and we can't do it, this is why we're modifying our plan, and we're adding on another three to six months till we get this data to say we're doing that. I think that helps everybody, because everybody knows what the touchdown line is and how we're going to work to get there. We don't have that, and that's what I think we're talking about, and we may not get it, we, you know, we have to go into overtime to get there, but at least we have clear, concise expectations, and right now, we don't have that.
Thanks.
Yeah, so the touchdown line under academic distress was forty-nine point five percent proficiency math and, and ELA. And, you know, we don't, we don't have that now. So we had three of the six academic distress schools that did meet that. The other three did not. So Cloverdale, Henderson, and Hall are the three that had never made that, made that mark. Um, and then, you know, the, that, the accountability system shifted under ESSA, and, you know, brought in multiple measures it moved away from that clearly defined. So before, you know, the law was very clear, if we could not certify to you that all schools in the district were out of academic distress, then there had to be certain actions that were very inflexible at, at that time. Now, we, uh, we, we having those multiple measures, and there had, you know, I, I've, I know there's a lot of frustration. I'm frustrated with this conversation because it kind of presents that, a picture that there's not been any, uh, things in place when there have been things in place. We just talked about the community advisory, advisory board, and the participation of the community in the community advisory board process has been almost nil.
Right.
And, you know, it's, did y'all have the authority? Did you, did you take over, y'all being the board that was in place at the time? Yes, but there's also delegated authority that then goes out, that is supposed to be working toward solving the problems, solving the conditions, creating better conditions, creating a, uh, a, a, a more, a, a firm foundation for future success. And when we talk about the community and what we hear here, that, that, many of those same members of the community do not engage with the process that has been set in place by the general assembly, by the state board. And now we're talking about, you know, what are the things that, that we need to do? Well, you know, what are, what are the things that board, that community advisory board should have been doing? Because in, community advisory board, it's not just personnel and student hearings that they advise me on as a commissioner, but it's broader policy issues, broader, uh, classroom issues, staffing issues, budgetary issues, all of those things that are part of the systems of a successful school district. Been, that's been a big missing piece in the, especially the last, well, I guess since the civic, uh, civic advisory committee issued a report, uh, the community advisory board was appointed soon thereafter, and the, the, the participation in that process, while the civic advisory committee was very active, the participation in the community advisory board has been, uh, very, uh, limited, uh, involvement.
And, and that's, I'm so glad you brought that out, because articulating that is very complex to, to average, to, to, to the community. And I think a communication plan may help it, because if, if I'm able to articulate that, and I'm out in the community, and they said, oh, da, 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 if I had this bullet points and I was, and, and I should know that. I'm not saying this, that, that's great information, that I should be able to respond to, to support what you just said, to communicate that to the stakeholders in a, uh, index card response, so that I don't have to give a dissertation to, that I can support. This is exactly, you know, did you realize that it was only forty-nine point five, and we're trying to get to not only fifty? We want to get eighty. Or we want, we, we, we want, we don't, we don't want to just burly scoot over the mantle and say that we can do that. We have the goals to, to, to do that, because what your team, what you all are doing is our, you know, is, is great efforts to get us where we're trying to go, but many people may not know that because of the complexity of what you just communicated. Now, you just told us that, all right? Now, if we went to Walmart and I'm pushing my buggy and somebody approached me like that, which has happened, and been very critical, you know, and so I just look. And, and if I, and, and I maybe have some communication plan from a work session, that we all come together, so we're all speaking, this is what we're, this is what we're going to do this quarter. This is what we're going to do. I don't know, Commissioner, I'm just saying from a frustration that, that when I'm hemmed up in, in, in the community, and, and, and I want to be able to respond that, because I, my deal is I want to do what's best for the children, which that's going to be my, that's the reason I'm here. I mean, man, that's, I'm very intentional about that, so tell me what you're going to do for the children. Well, I want to make sure, you know, I say, well, my, my experts, I, I want to make sure we're reading and, you know, all those things. So I don't think anybody's saying that we're not doing work. I know I'm not, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I think my deal is how we articulate and communicate what we are doing. And I think if we get a wraparound that, and I can, uh, better communicate that with the, with the plan, like you're saying, if we want to be at the goal we've set forty-nine, we want to be at sixty-five, uh, fall seventy, whatever, da, da, da. That's the only way my mind works, I don't know, you know, that's, that's just my thought. So I'm not, I'm not being gripey or anything, I just want to make sure that, that, um, that the transition, whenever that may be, I don't know when, early or later, that, that that's laid out, that we agreed upon, that's what we're trying to do, and if we don't meet that, then we keep modifying it till we do meet it.
One of the things that I find helpful, because as you all know, I spend a lot of time in Little Rock, is I keep handy for me, uh, a copy of the members of the community advisory board, the zone they represent, explain to them, your elected representatives made recommendations to the commissioner. He then, you know, selected the ones who are on that board. These people are your current representatives, here's their contact information, or if you give me your contact information, I'll have them get in contact with you. Which, it, that's my small way of trying to help ADE and the community, and in turn the kids, so that they know they have someone to talk to, because they might feel comfortable calling Dr. Barth or Ms. Dean or you because you are from Little Rock. But if they understand they have a zone person, just like they did when they had an elected board, somebody that knows their area and represents them and comes in every month and can bring the issues. Because I know as I watch the CAB meetings, uh, there have been different times that different people on the, on the CAB committee have brought that day, saying, well, these parents called me, and, you know, and I know that often when people who don't like the way things are going show up and are more verbal often at a meeting than the people who are okay with the thing, way things are going. So I don't have the impression that the people who have come to our meetings, the majority of the people who have come to our meetings are necessarily speaking for the community at large. Uh, I know that several parents and teachers from these schools who are currently have Ds and Fs have said, you know, please help us, you know, we're, we're wanting, those people aren't speaking for me. Now, y'all may be getting different input from different people, I just saying that we know, when it gets right down to it, this parent and this teacher care about this kid. Is my kid being taught to read? Is my kid showing up? Is my kid being cared for? And if, if not, then they want us to do something. If so, then they're happy. So I think back to Dr. Hill's point, I agree, if it's like less, what's going on for the kids? And if we haven't clearly articulated that, then, um, each one of us can do our own little thing, like, you know, I just have the card that I've used, and that's my way of doing it. But other people may come up with, you know, a different way, um, uh, or say, you know, I get a lot of the special ed and dyslexia calls, so I'll say, here's someone who can advocate for you at your conference. Here's someone, you know, this, so some of it may be that we, like, I have done nothing to inform, better inform myself about Earl. So if somebody came to me about Earl, then I'm not going to be helpful about Earl. So if, if, the same thing with like Pine Bluff or Dollar Way or Little Rock, some, if we are not well-informed about what's going on and what the department is doing, maybe part of that responsibility is us, and not just ADE or Little Rock School District or Pine Bluff or Earl or whatever. So I think it, we're all wanting the same thing, it's just a matter of, are we all realizing ultimately what's going to work best for the kids? The things I brought to y'all, in my mind, were the processes that needed to take place. Uh, some of you agreed and some of you didn't agree, you know, but we're going forward. But if, if we're saying we don't understand what the plan is, then we've now articulated that we don't know what the plan is as individuals or as a group. You know, help us with this, we can, and if you do understand what the plan is, then what are you doing as an individual board member to help the community realize what that plan is?
I'm, I just, you, you, you're exactly right. And I guess my point is, is that that's a process of shared goals, that we are, that we communicate and articulate as a board, that we say that's what, that's what we're going to do. And I think if I heard what Ms. Chambers was talking about, we'd get asked those questions, and we're not congruent in our responses at the time, because we don't, we haven't, like, for example, I'm going to give you, what you'd mentioned, and I don't know, because I'm not the educator at, at the level as, as, as our teachers are, but what you mentioned very well may have been what need to transpire in order to get to the goals that the commissioner mentioned. However, if that had been articulated in a work session, that I understood exactly what you were bringing up, and at that point, you, you made a rationale, um, uh, basis for what, then we may have all been on board at that time. But I didn't. You, you see what I'm saying, and so, and it may have been the right thing, I don't know, but it was the first time we heard it. And so, I mean, I, and I just think that's what the communication piece that I'm talking about as a board, to get us all on the same page. And we are, look, we can't talk to each other outside of here, so I mean, that's the law, okay? So that's, that's some of the problem too. I mean, we have to abide by the law in, in making sure we do what, you know, that we're in compliance. So we're, by, by us being in compliance, we don't communicate. So what you did, you couldn't call and say, Fitz, what'd you think? But then I think what she said, that's the work session that we have to come to, that we work through that, with the plan that we take to the board and say, hey, this is what we think. Now, we, look, if everybody thinks alike, somebody's not needed. That's not, that's why we're all independent, that's why we're up here, that we all bring different experiences to the board. But I think as we work through this, if that's our plan to, to, as, as, as to be, uh, transparent with our community and understand, they might not like, but I, you, you're exactly right, I get positive things too. I mean, saying, hey, we, you know, man, you realize what happened before, that, please don't let that hap, I get that too. So, and, 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 but I want to be transparent and be confident when I say, look, I'm, I'm doing what I think is best. It may not be what you like, but I, I think this is best, and from the information that we've given. So, I mean, we'll keep working through it, and I, that's just, uh, my perspective.
So I'm going to let Ms. Chambers, since you got this conversation started, um, kind of finish it out and see where you, where you want to take this, based on your initial.
Well, I, I think even the reference to the community advisory board is, is interesting. I, 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 I do think we need a thorough update on, especially if, and it, maybe the committee, uh, the community advisory board participation is one of those key triggers on, in, um, as an indication whether the community's ready to take, um, local control. And if it is, do they know that? Are we, are we really holding up the mirror on what needs to be happening, both hard and fast, like a score for a school, but also other things that are indicative that they're ready to take it back, but maybe, there may be more intangible? I mean, so I, I think we need to understand that, and then figure out what, more or different, or maybe stay the course, things we need to be doing in this next year as we're mindful of where we're at in the, in the relationship we have with the Little Rock District, school district. So Commissioner, no one So, Commissioner, no one is better, in a better position than you, based on everything that's going on, that we're not all individually as close to, to hear this, know what we're all collectively going through, and make a recommendation. I, I just, I ask you that it is not more of the same. We need to be doing something different, in my opinion, as a board, in understanding and the way we spend our time as a board with the community as we go through the next year. But I, I defer and just ask you to make a recommendation on what you think we need to do next.
That doesn't have to happen.
It won't happen now, because I, I'm, because I probably will need to explore with you, how does it look different than what we've been doing with the regular reports from the district that we've had? It's always been on the action agenda, Mr. Poor has come, he's brought his team. So, I, I, I guess that's my confusion, is what does this board want that's different than the regular conversations that have been a, a part of the last almost four years? So...
Certainly, I'll let my peers speak for themselves, but, and, and maybe these, these will be individual conversations that we have. I'm looking for gap. I'm looking between where we're at as the Little, Little Rock School District right now, and what still needs to be done in terms of grade, performance, or other things before they are in a position to be, to have local control returned. And so, looking at how we can articulate that differently than we have so far. And, and this may be just me, and you'll, you'll get a chance to talk to the rest of the board and see if they feel very differently. But that's certainly my need.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, good conversation. Any other business?
I moved to adjourn.
All right, is there a second? All right, motion by Ms., second by Ms. Newton, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
See y'all in a moment.